Welcome, everyone. We are waiting for one more school board member to have quorum. So we are going to go ahead and start with information items while we wait. So our first presentation is from Hall Elementary. Oh. Okay, so we'll have the video presentation and questions after the video.
Yeah. Yep, I'll go ahead and introduce Heidi Lasher from Hall. She'll come on up tonight. Her video is first and it schools in the I'll read the explanation like I should. Myra schools in district of an ass to share information about their school improvement, plan, plans and share highlights ongoing instruction happening in their building. Time has been set aside in the news of Jennifer Hall Elementary School to provide their instruction highlight. And first up is Paul and Heidi Lasher is here to write as principal to represent her school.
Good evening Chair Peterson, School Board and Dr. Prera. I am Heidi Lasher, Principal Hall Elementary School, and I'm going to share with you the Hall Elementary School Improvement Plan. Hall Elementary is an amazing community. We are a Title One school with 380 students, 12 spoken languages and 25% language learners. About 23% of our students are mobile, moving in and out of the school community. We are a diverse learning community. At Hall, we celebrate our brand Hall Together. All students and families who walk through the doors at Hall become a unique member of our community. From the moment they arrive, we begin to foster caring relationships. Supports academic, social and emotional are in place, so all students have equitable access to academic rigor. Together, we build character, strength, knowledge and memories that last well after a student leaves the Hall family. In addition, our grade level teams and staff engage in purposeful collaboration every day. Hall is celebrating diversity and teaching anti-bias education in every classroom. Teachers are leading lessons on identity, diversity, justice and action using the race racial literacy standards from Learning for Justice. Many of the Learning for Justice racial literacy standards have been embedded in the Oregon State 2021, 2022 school social studies standards. Hall students are engaging in these lessons through critical discussion and reflective writing based on their own identities and diversity within their community. This work has been led by our kindergarten teachers Samantha Fowler, Cassandra Holliday and Abby Newcomer and our third grade teachers Jennifer Gonrowski, Anna Martin and Jessica Mim. We have purchased diverse books written by BIPOC authors for classrooms, book sets for small group instruction and have added to our school library. Attendance has been a relentless focus at Hall through attendance initiatives and interventions. Hall has made progress on the number of regular attenders. In February of 2020, 81% of Hall students were regular attenders before closing our doors due to the pandemic. Our work has moved from attendance to engagement, which I will share more with you in an upcoming slide. The number of office discipline referrals has reduced over the years. We have incorporated restorative justice practices, schoolwide social emotional learning, including most recently ruler, recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing and regulating emotions. This is a look at our I ready data for reading and math. Our reading trend lines show an overall growth across years. We see urgency in our fifth grade growth as we can see a widening in the gap. We have analyzed our DIBELS data and are responding. The data slide on the right shows overall growth in math over time with a narrowing of the gap between Hall third graders and Gresham Borough School District third graders, indicating a slight acceleration. Our previous school improvement plans have included MTSS supports, mathematical discourse, school aligned vocabulary routines, data driven instruction and teacher collaboration. Our first school improvement goal is accessible and intentional instruction. Teachers record and discuss learning intentions in their professional learning teams. They record clarity in weekly learning plans and communicate learning intentions with students in meets and in their digital platforms. Our second school improvement goal is social emotional learning. We are in year two of our focus on ruler. All staff have been trained and we have started implementation of rules strategy ruler strategies in some classrooms, including developing classroom charters. Classroom charters are classroom norms developed as a community based on needs and feelings. Hall's focus on racial literacy standards have also contributed greatly to our school and classroom communities. This focus is evident in most things that we do. Our third school improvement goal is attendance and mobility. This is a continuation of our work on attendance and last year, due to our mobile student population, we added a focus of leveraging evidence based practices to improve student success when they move to Hall. After the pandemic, this work pivoted to engagement. We worked with all hands raised and quickly developed a metric and tiered process for student engagement. Of the students that attended Hall last year, 57% of the students who struggled to engage in distance learning were regular attenders last year. Our accomplishments at Hall are a result of the constant and continuous collaboration amongst teachers and staff. The collaboration at Hall has led to schoolwide rollout of anti-bias education, the relentless focus on engagement and our sense of community. I leave you with a quote from Marley, a third grade student in Mrs. Men's classroom. A charter is making a choice together to affect the community. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions at the moment? I do. Thank you for your presentation. I am wondering if you can share some of the PT or trainings that teachers have had around the implementation of anti-bias education?
So we've been using the standards from Learning for Justice formerly known as teaching tolerance. So they've had a name change, a good name change, and they have self-led training on in that website as well as most of our teams have the work has come from the book Unpack Your Impact, which has made a lot of influence on the rollout of the standards. And then collaboration and also as a group teachers doing their own work, reading Ibram X. Kendi, Bettina Love and other sources for their own personal work. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's I just want to make sure that I'm paying attention to our board member who's logged on and Amanda who just got here. Rowan, do you have any questions or comments?
I I just want to say how I really appreciate the focus on anti-bias education and thank you so much and also the emphasis on social emotional. This was a great presentation. My one comment is, why would you say anti-bias and not anti-racist?
That's a good question. I think that language comes from the Learning for Justice website and standards, so I I'm not quite sure how to answer that. But that's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you. I would encourage you to lead it to anti-racism because when we talk about equity, we're really talking about the intersectionality. And what we really need to be careful, a lot of times within our systems is when we talk about bias as a whole, a lot of times we talk about disability and we talk about income and other forms of prejudice and oppression. But a lot of times when we we do that, we do leave out race. And so it's really important that when we are talking, having these discussions that we're talking about, you know, being not just disabled, white and disabled, but being black and disabled, being black and low income or not black, but BIPOC, look at the diversity. But you lead with race because within the intersectionality of the bias, one factor and common denominator that you can't change is is ethnicity. And so I would just encourage you to really lean into anti-racist and anti-racism education. But thank you very much.
Thank you for your feedback.
Any other questions? I have one more. Can you describe a little bit of the work that your school has taken part of with all hands raised and the impact that that work has had with students?
For the engagement? Yeah, so we quickly realized we needed to make some metrics and tiered system of supports for our students who are struggling to engage. And our metric was less than 50% assignment completion. And so the intervention started at the classroom teacher level where classroom teachers did interventions of keep having students stay after class and assignment completion, sending families lists of assignments, helping coach families to understand the Google Classroom. The list goes on and then teachers referred students to our intervention team where we able to make home visits and coach parents on using incentive kits and just establish a systematic plan for that because we have a lot of our work was focusing on engagement. So we made sure it was systematic and that we were recording what we were doing.
Any other questions or comments before we conclude? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Robin, you're still there, correct? Yeah, okay, so now we're going to circle back so that we can approve of our agenda. Now that we have quorum, so I'll call to order our meeting at 6:23. Present, we have Director Howard, Director Stowers virtually and Director Roscoe Beach and Myra Gomez. So moving to the agenda for more.
So I would move to approve the meeting agenda and because we are a limited group tonight, I would ask that we pull the policy review first reading item off the agenda.
I disagree. But we can vote.
So we'll move to vote on moving the which agenda item?
D1?
D1. So we are supposed to move the agenda item 1 from today's agenda? So we'll vote, we'll vote on that? Yeah, because we don't have, we need a four vote in any action items today and there are only four of us. So knowing Director Stowers vote already, we can't remove the agenda item. So our motion is dies for lack of a second.
So so are we voting on anything today then? If that's okay, we're voting on nothing?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the meeting agenda is presented.
A second.
Okay, moved. The agenda has been moved for approval by Director Howard, second by Director Stowers. Any discussion? So everyone owes a favor? Any opposed? Okay, so our agenda has been approved. So we're gonna continue with Clear Creek Middle School.
I'll introduce for you tonight, Dave Atherton, Principal Clear Creek Middle School for questions and to represent Clear Creek.
Good evening Chair Peterson, Dr. Pereira, members of the board and directors. I'm Dave Atherton, Principal at Clear Creek Middle School, home of the Wildcats. In my ninth year as Principal at Clear Creek, there's been a lot of changes. The five-year demographic averages show an increase in students of color outnumbering students identifying their ethnicity as white. Clear Creek has the second highest population of English language learners in the district now. Our special education students access core classes and electives throughout the day with inclusive support from our amazing educational assistants and resource teachers. Our free and reduced number is likely over 90% if all applications were submitted by families. Currently, all students have access to free breakfast, lunch and supper if in the SUN program. Clear Creek students have a high mobility rate averaging 31% from June to June. Our staff contribute to this list of what makes Clear Creek unique. Our award-winning STEAM program instructional technology, Verizon innovative learning school and lab programs and innovative staff provides students with access to 21st century tools and skills to explore career pathways and a supporting environment. Our diversity, teamwork and commitment to students and colleagues are hallmarks of the school grounded in the four Rs, respect, responsibility, relationship and results. Attendance was a challenge at Clear Creek prior to distance learning. This year, our attendance team increased individual communication and support to students and families in distance learning. As we transition towards hybrid and full in person, the importance of sustained staffing will enhance relationships between students, families and staff. We continue to seek opportunities but need more to increase our academic intervention and support to help students succeed. Our team identified interpersonal relationship incidents between students and students and students and staff. Targeted interventions focused on social emotional learning and relational aggression and advisory lessons, health classes and the creation of a student affinity and focus groups to discuss issues. Staff explored issues of disrespect and disruption through an equity lens promoting cultural responsiveness and restorative practices. As evidenced in the data, we were on track to reducing these issues before beginning distance learning. Academically, the majority of Clear Creek students are one or more grade levels behind in math and reading. Teacher leaders are discussing the differences in grades and performance in these areas to communicate students' actual knowledge and skills instead of academic behavior such as work completion. In 2122, we will offer four academic support classes in math and reading. We hope to further our work with the grade and performance discrepancies, exploring improvements and changing practices. The school improvement team set this goal to increase student engagement and promote a positive teaching and learning environment and the relationships. Students learn about positive interpersonal relationships in the advisory lessons created by our PBS team. During distance learning, staff created virtual socia's, innovated family outreach, increasing conference attendance by over 25% in the fall and collected student survey data on a variety of topics to make choices. To support high school graduation rates, our team chose to set a goal for eighth graders to accelerate their math growth and achievement. Through a variety of instructional and resource trainings and efforts to reinforce math skills and concepts across curriculum, we hope to improve high school math readiness. Chronic absenteeism has challenged the students' education and culture and climate of the building. Through a variety of efforts, we hope to increase attendance when we return to in-person learning. Due to impact of COVID-19 on schools, the 1921 data and trends cannot easily be quantified or representative of the available actions which are challenged by distance learning. As staff returns and systems begins to rebuild, the team will revisit the goals and plans, updating with new baseline data and activities. Clear Creek continues to be a student-focused and collaborative workplace. Our licensed and classified teams strive to close achievement gaps and performance gaps while providing college and career pathway experiences. Award-winning STEAM program Kickstarter instructional technologies, but our recent Verizon grants and projects exhibit sustained innovation. Our active equity team ensures multiple perspectives and decision-making in the school as students experience a variety of career pathways, cultural relevant teaching and learning and welcoming inclusive environment and supports development as a whole child. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from our board members?
I just have one question about the slide that has behavior trends. What sorts of things are in incident reports? Because you have other things that are down below. So are those included in the incident reports or are there other things that are part of that?
Yeah, great question. Incident report is really where we start out with students identifying what they perceive as a problem. So it could be relational, it could be something that they saw that they want to report. So it's really just that that first step of identifying a challenge or a problem that they're having with another student and seeking resolution. So not all of them are directly related to something that that could result in some sort of disciplinary action or referral. Sometimes they're they we have incident reports that just say, hey, I'm having this problem with this student and I would like some peer mediation or I need a counselor support.
I have a question about your STEM program. So will how many students, English language learners are taking advantage of your great STEM program? And with academic support courses, will that also interfere in more students having access to STEM classes?
I cannot hear. Is there?
Sorry, was my mic not on?
It wasn't.
Okay, my fault. I'll let me start again. So yeah, we have two elective classes for each grade level. If one of those is an ELD class or a special ed class, then that would mean that they they have one less opportunity there. One of the things we we put into place this last year is students were on track and doing well on their ELD, were able to remove them and from an ELD pullout and they're receiving support from licensed ELD teachers in social studies and language arts. So they're getting that ELD support still and and working on that, which opens up that elective period. And same thing with the special education population, then with that inclusion, they're getting a lot of that SDI in the core class now. So we have more students accessing STEM as well as art music.
So so that means that teachers are duly licensed. So there are social studies and ELD and then so would that be an option for students who are newcomers or early intermediates to be able to have access to STEM courses? Are there STEM teachers who are ELD endorsed?
All newcomers on within the middle school in our district, they go to the newcomer program at Dexter. So I'm not sure how they have their elective set up there. But as any student comes back to us in their second year, once they exit that newcomer program, then they would they would be right into kind of the regular scheduled programming.
Any other questions or comments from board members? My last one, you mentioned that one of the goals is your climate and culture with with students. Have you, is that based on student survey or what role has student voice played in that goal and in improvement of of that goal?
Again, great question in terms of in the distance learning, how are you getting the students involved? We use a variety of things. We've had several surveys. Some of those are district as we worked through panorama with the survey earlier this fall. We've done additional surveys that our counselors have pushed out or we've done, you know, shorter surveys in terms of perception checks on what students feel that they might need. That information goes directly to our counselors and they identify students or families to follow up with. The other piece to that, the beginning of this year, we contacted every family through our bilingual staff or through other staff or as needed interpreted students to gather that information. And then as we found out what the needs were or what the interests were, then we bring that in and try to incorporate that into our communication, our planning, our decision making or additional options.
And I just had a couple comments. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, you know, and this is more about, you know, for the board, how we want to, you know, move forward with tracking these. It would be really, I think, nice to have a template of how our middle schools, elementary schools, high schools are presenting back to us and have more of a consistent formula so we can see how people are doing and ensure that there's information, consistent information in these updates. Something that I believe is really important is to always be tracking, engaging our academic achievement gaps and our disciplinary gaps within our students. And so moving forward, you know, just looking at our templates, making sure that we're including those target areas that we are really focusing on and we want to make those improvements on. But thank you for the presentation. It was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Gordon Russell presenting next.
Director Gomez, Roland had a calendar confusion. He's on his way now. So if we could move Deep Creek up, that would be helpful and he'll be here soon.
Okay, Deep Creek.
As I say that, I should introduce Principal here as well. Barb Keaton is here to represent her school. So thank you very much, Barb.
Good evening Chair Peterson, Gresham Borough School Board and Dr. Pereira. I'm Barb Keaton, the Principal at Deep Creek Dynastis K-8 School, and I'm excited to share a bit about our school improvement plan with you. At DCD, we currently have 433 students across nine grade levels. While most of our subgroups have remained relatively constant over the last four years, our spread population has grown by just over three percentage points and our overall racial diversity has increased slightly, while it still remains significantly lower than most schools in the Gresham Borough District. We are unique because we are the only K-8 school in our district and we're located in rural Clackamas County. We also have a school-wide house system where all of our students and staff are divided into four different houses that we use for school-wide competitions, celebrations and to help us build a stronger community across the K-8 spectrum. At DCD, we continue to celebrate strong participation from our students and also our families. We're fortunate to have a very active parent teacher organization that supports our students and staff in many different ways. We're also focused on building strong personal leadership skills for each of our students with a school-wide focus on modeling and teaching the seven habits of highly effective people based on the work of Stephen Huddy. As I mentioned in the last slide, generally our students have high attendance rates. You can see the percentage of students who are attending at at least 90% of the time in the green column. Because of the low number of students in each grade level, each student strongly impacts our overall percentages. So it's helpful to see exactly how many students we're talking about. So in the yellow column, you will see the actual number of students who are attending dating to 90% of the time. And then the red column, the actual number of students who are attending less than 80% of the time. Our team works very closely to support individual students who are not reaching that 90% attendance rate. To show how our students are doing academically, we'll start with a table that shows DCD's data from the state testing in 2019. And last year we did that. Compares that to the state averages. You can see we generally perform higher than the state. This side is to show our trends in our I ready reading data. The goal is to grow the green bar, which indicates the students at or above grade level and to shrink the size of the yellow and red bar, which are the students just below or significantly below grade level. Our students made growth this year even in comprehensive distance learning. The top white boxes data from this school year comparing the fall diagnostic scores, which is the smaller kind of shaded outline to the January, February scores in the top line. The lower box is the same data from last year so that you can compare how we did in distance learning to how we were doing when we were in person. This is the same data, but for middle school I ready reading. And you can see that we grew the green bar in both years, but not as significantly as at the elementary level. And this data is for I ready math at the elementary level where the green zone is also growing and we see reduction in the red zone. And the last one of these charts is for I ready math at the middle school level. It's important to note that about half of our eighth graders are taking the high school integrated one math class, so they do not do ready math and they're not always included in the I ready data. These next two graphs were added after I submitted my presentation because I just received them yesterday. And this one shows the trend across the last three years in grades three, five and seven. And it compares how we are doing across how our school is doing compared to the students across the Gresham Borough School District on the I ready reading assessment. This is that same trend data for grades three, five and seven, but it's for I ready math assessment. And again, the black lines are for Gresham Borough and the colored lines are for DCD. Our first.
Is it frozen for everyone or just me? Is it frozen for everyone or just me? Did we lose? Are there people on here? What's going on? Hi, Marjorie. Hi, Jasha. I think we're just going to have to hang out for a bit. I don't even have permissions to allow people to talk, so everyone follow up, but the audience is here. Hey, Eddie. All right, I'll see if you can get us back on. Hey, I'm allowing you guys to talk. I'm seeing what's going on.
Hello?
Hey.
Hey.
No, I'm good. I'm really hungry.
We're trying to get back on.
Ah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. It seems like it's just us and all of a sudden I made the host.
AOB, you called. What's up? Can you still see? I can't see anything. It's just me and Robin.
And all the panelists. There's 30 panelists on here.
That's so funny. Is this allowed? This is Robin's board meeting now?
Right? I will give access to everyone who wants to speak now. Is it, it's still recording? Oh, my goodness. This is so bad. All right, they said that everyone is recessing right now and fixing the technology. So they are working on it.
Thank you.
We'll be resuming in about a minute, so start taking your places, please. So we are going to continue with questions for Deep Creek Damascus. And Director Howard had a question.
So I have one back on your slide that was talking about attendance. Let me get back to that one real quick. Attendance trends and eighth grade seem to have the slip just a little bit. That's a little bit concerning to me as kids are moving into high school, so.
And that's concerning to us as well. And it is not a normal trend for us. I think it is reflective of the virtual environment. And I think it's twofold. One, the age of kids, and they're just so socially motivated to not be with their friends. They're not as interested and willing. I also think they are more likely to be home without a parent telling them right now it's time to get online. So we're working hard to get those other kids back up.
You mentioned that the school offers an advanced math class or high school level math class. I'm wondering how students are selected for that course? What's the makeup of the students in the course racially, socioeconomically? And how do you prevent tracking?
The students are selected based on test scores and teacher recommendation. That middle school math teacher has those students all three years in middle school. This year's a little different because we have the four-period schedule. But so he works with the kids in sixth grade, seventh grade, and into eighth grade. So he does most of the identification for that class, but it's also based on parents and students. As far as the racial makeup of it, we have such small groups that the numbers, percentages don't even make sense to look at. So for instance, last year, we had nine students in our whole school pay eight across nine grade levels where Spanish was their first language, right? So it's just really about which kid is in that grade that year. There's not a subgroup that is big enough to talk about statistically.
So on the math, then, is this the math for the students at other middle schools as well? Eighth grade, they can take ninth grade math. It counts towards their high school credit, right? Is that okay?
Because you have such a small number of English language learners, how is their parent voice incorporated into the PTA or parent teacher organization? How is their input taken into the school?
They're certainly welcome and we reach out, but again, the numbers are small. And the, for instance, I said we had nine students who Spanish was their first language. Four of them were siblings, right? So that's one family, which means they have three families whose students are second language learners. And we reach out to them and actively try to engage them because I know culturally from the Hispanic families, the personal invite is more meaningful than an electronic one or a paper one. But we have not been successful at, we have people of color in there, but not people whose students are second language learners.
Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, I just wanted to finish the presentation on student improvement. Oh, no, it wasn't. What part of it? The school improvement plan? I was hoping to hear more of that and just have you speak to that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, your school improvement plan. You didn't finish the presentation because of the internet and all that. I'd like to hear it. I could, or.
Can you listen to the rest of what I said on the recording?
I couldn't hear anything. I went to the restroom or? Oh, okay. All right. Sorry, my bad. I thought you were still answering questions and all that. Okay. Okay, awesome. So how many students collectively do you have in the school?
This year, 433. We should have just over 500, but with the distance learning shift, we lost a chunk. We have 433 right now.
All righty. And so after Deep Creek Damascus, these students go to Gresham?
Barlow.
Barlow, okay. I was just curious because I'm looking at your student improvement plan. Where is it? Sorry, I should have written this down, be more organized. What kind of culturally responsive teaching strategies are you implementing?
We spent a lot of time working on the culturally responsive teaching strategies a handful of years back. And it's about creating that safer environment and recognizing that we're different culturally. And it is difficult for my staff sometimes because all the iceberg tips look the same. And they forget that underneath, even though all the kids in that particular room, sorry, maybe Caucasian, doesn't mean their culture was the same. So a lot of mind shift in that area to start with, just thinking about the fact that what we bring to the table is different even when our skin is the same color. And then we shifted from that to the conversation about the fact that racism is actually a white person's problem. And that because you don't have kids of color in your room right now, means you need to talk about it maybe more, not less, right? And that's been a mind shift for the staff as well. I use the analogy of sexism and the fact that if you think about when women couldn't vote and women didn't have rights, women could never change that. They needed men to step up to the table and change that. Because women weren't making laws, women weren't holding people accountable for following laws, women weren't the one in places of power. So they couldn't make any of those changes. And so they needed men to join that fight, right? So racism is the same way, that as people of white skin color, we are the ones that need to own the problem. And we are the ones that need to take the reins because we're in more situations where we hold the power. And so our work at DCD has been a lot more about that, part of the mind shift and why it's important that we're still talking about race and racism so that we're not raising more students of white privilege who don't understand their role in all of that.
All righty. And then one more question. How many BIPOC staff or teachers do you have on campus?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
How many BIPOC teachers and staff do you have on campus?
I don't have any staff of color. I do have some with their sexual orientation is different, but I don't have any staff of color.
All righty. Are you gonna, are you, do you have any plans in the future to hire more BIPOC?
I absolutely make every effort to do so and to recruit as well.
Thank you.
I just want to say, can I speak or somebody else speak? I just want to say thank you for saying that, you know, racism, you know, the burden of that should be on white people as well and for acknowledging whiteness as for its own uniqueness, right? Whiteness isn't a norm, that there's a diversity within that that we need to acknowledge when we're talking about our European ancestry, what that means and what that privilege is. And so thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to Gordon Russell.
As Rollin approaches his podium, I'll introduce Principal Rollin Hayden representing Gordon Russell Middle School this evening.
This is Rollin Hayden, principal of Gordon Russell Middle School, here to talk to you about our school improvement plan for the 2021 school year. So first off, it started off by going beyond, going beyond for our students. And that is Kim Barker, our assistant principal, in a papier-mache astronaut hat, getting excited to welcome teachers back. So that was our theme. And that theme was given to our teachers who then was excited to welcome about 738 students this year. The course of the last five years, our enrollment's kind of gone up about 100 students from that number, then back down. And current demographics have been kind of similar. It's actually been quite of a similar trend over the last five years. What makes our school unique? Well, we're Spirit Award winners. And we do that because we're excited about kids. We're excited about what we do in education. And that's the climate and culture that we're excited to kind of to show off. We're the largest middle school in the Gresham Borough School District and we like to focus on kindness. So kindness matters to us. We participate in the Great Kindness Challenge every year. And then, of course, we have a diverse student population. And we have 16 different languages spoken at different homes in our, of community that we serve. And so that's a pride point for us. What are we celebrating? So celebration number one, we're an envoy certified school. We had an independent person come in to evaluate our program. And they came away and went to every teacher's classroom and they had to meet seven different criteria. And we came away with being a certified school, which were a pride point for us. Of course, the bond work has been amazing. We're celebrating that. Really, the excitement that we have in our school can really shine in the way our school looks now. So we're happy with our community and we're super excited that they've given us this gift. And then, of course, school spirit is alive and well at Gordon Russell Middle School. Attendance. Attendance has been trending down a little bit of late. I kind of think that that's going to trend up here once we start hybrid. Once we start hybrid, we attribute that to our yellow zone team that meets and our grade level teams. So we have grade level teams that meet to identify kids. Then that is taken to our yellow zone team and then our yellow zone kind of delineates, which is the best connection to reach out to families and kind of remove barriers for kids. Behavior, we really haven't seen a lot of behavior this year. So that's not something that's been on our radar. Academic trends, thirty-seven percent of our students have met their annual growth at the mid-year diagnostic. So that was one taken at the beginning of the year and one taken in the middle of the year. For, for, that's for math, forty-sixth for reading. But the exceptional one of note is that for eighth grade, we really had a hundred and four percent of annual growth, which is pretty exceptional in our eighth grade. School improvement plan, if we focus on student engagement, engagement, then student attendance will improve. And so, you know, that's connections and outreach, that's home visits, that's envoy and clarity, that's school climate, spirit days. Yes, that's me and my kids, they're doing a TikTok dance that I owed the school, the students, if they brought in a certain amount of food. So again, that bringing that climate and culture and then creating that welcoming and school, welcoming and inclusive environment is important to us. If we collaborate in professional learning teams, quality and clarity of instruction will improve. So we focus on our PLCs and we know that teacher collective efficacy has one of the highest effect rates. So strong professional learning teams guaranteed and viable curriculum, meaning as my kids travel through the school, doesn't matter which teacher you have, you will be exposed to the same content, the same delivery of style. And then data-driven decision-making for supporting students, school-wide focus on clarity, just to name a few things that we've been really focusing on. School improvement plan, goal number three, if we provide strong standard-based instruction, then student achievement will improve. So talked a little about, about the I-ready assessment. So rigorous-based standards, providing individual interventions, that's what our I-ready does. Supporting reading across the content areas, including some math and providing student feedback. And then we strive for forty-five is a big deal at our school this year. Closing thoughts, some key areas, remember about the presentation is our staff is going beyond for students this year. Our major goal is to, is student engagement. We want our students to thrive at our school, from teachers to support staff. And, you know, our students, our school strives to deliver meaningful instruction to support all students. Every student, every classroom, every day, which is our school motto. So that's Gordon Russell Middle School, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Two, on the attendance, is that just grouped by the entire school? Do you have attendance by grade level?
Yes, I did.
Get your mic.
Okay, there you go. So yeah, I've delineated down by grade level, I also delineate down by demographics. So when I talked at the slide deck, talking about specifically teams. So we have grade level teams that meet and they meet and talk about kids. They let us know if kids are not engaging. In those teams, you have your grade level, you have your student community liaison, you have a student engagement specialist, you have your counselor and you have an admin. They meet, they talk about kids and then we have a yellow zone meeting, which is kind of that next level. We bring kids from the teacher classroom level to the next level. And then that's where we go to the kind of the red zone where we get the home visit. So it's kind of like a tiered effect that you see. So we really have systematized the process. So yes, I gave kind of general data, but we drill down at the school level using panorama to specific kids as it goes through kind of the tiered systems of intervention.
Okay, because it might be, I mean, from our perspective, would be interesting to see if there's the same kind of what we saw at the other schools, where sixth grade, seventh grade was good, eighth grade lost a little bit.
No, you, I know what I would say is it's a similar trend that the eighth grade year. And in, even in in-person, that is a trend that is always on my mind. Because I've always felt that the end of the second half of eighth grade year, I tend to see a falloff. It is, it is a known, it's a known trend that I have been aware, I mean, I've done this job for a long time. It is a frustrating trend that I've tried to come at it in a lot of different ways, so it is on my radar.
And I don't know what envoy is.
So envoy is educational, non-verbal yardsticks. And what it really means is that in, in a, become more non-verbal in your classroom, be less combative, be more inclusive of the students, be more clear in presentation. And so it, it is a set of tools. And in my mind, it can help with classroom management, it can help with engagement strategies in the classroom. So it has a lot of different tool sets that go along with it. And so for us, some of, some of the involvement and equity is how to deliver content in a way and engage students and re-engage students to get all students back in. And so there are different kind of sets of strategies and it's called envoy. It is a system, we studied it for two years. We had an evaluator come in, they, they had to go and it was by teacher invite. So they invited them in and they went around, it was really, it was kind of an interesting ordeal. Because as an administrator who's used to going in and evaluating, I didn't do the evaluating. They spent an entire day at our school going from teacher to teacher to teacher, this is right before pandemic, and evaluating their practice as it relates to these skills. And over ninety percent of our teachers met those skills, so we were, it was a big pride point for us. We're still implementing those tools in our classrooms, but it's a little different right now. But certainly we've modified them to make them applicable in this environment, so. I could talk about it a really long time, but I'll, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Hello, I just have one question. It's the same one I asked Principal Keaton not too long ago. What does your inclusive school environment, equity, inclusion and welcoming environment, what does that look like at Gordon Russell?
Certainly, so you'll notice a few things. One is for us, we have a large Latino population, Latina, Latinx. And what we do is we communicate in multiple languages, everything. I send it out multiple languages, my community liaison, it reaches out. And, and, and you asked a question of, of, about staff of color. That has been a priority for years for us as well. I have been fortunate to be able to hire quite a few staff of color, including my entire front office. So if someone calls and is Spanish speaking, they, the person that answers the phone, no matter what, is a Spanish speaker. And so for us, a pride point is to make sure that people feel included in our building, no matter what your background is. So I don't know how much in-depth you want me to go and the exact numbers off the top of my head, I didn't have them. But certainly, there's quite a few staff of color in my school. If you wanted further numbers, I could.
Yeah, what about, like, what are you all teaching, like your students, to create welcoming environments for, for BIPOC students? And just make them feel included as well, like what are the students learning?
Yeah, so certainly in advisory, we, we, we have taken kind of a shift in some thinking. And I kind of got this from a student long ago. I used to be an administrator at a high school. And I had a student of color leave a classroom pretty frustrated that the only thing that they tend to learn is about, in their, in their history, everything is negative. And that weighed heavy on my heart as an administrator, it was about ten years ago. So our focus has been in our advisory lessons, teaching of color, history of, of people that have done great things and not necessarily all the negative things that occurred in history. So great inventors that, so for Black History Month, it was all about the amazing accomplishments of black people in history. And, and that's kind of how we kind of have shifted thinking about how we present different cultures in our building. And we've kind of done that through our advisory lessons this year, so that would be an example, I guess. Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
In our last presentation.
I just wanted to say, just, just had a comment. But, but I just want to say thank you for not focusing on the trauma of diverse communities as, as consistently as the history lesson and really focusing on strength-based practices and lessons. That is really powerful for a student to go in and to hear about something great, about something that happened in their community rather consistently being reinforced with the messages of trauma. So I just want to encourage more of that, thank you.
Yeah, and again, I can't say enough about that particular scenario played pretty heavy on my heart. It was about ten years ago, but something I haven't forgotten, so thanks.
Thank you, Director Stowers. And next we have Hogan Cedars Elementary.
And I will take this opportunity to introduce Principal Elaine Luckenbaum, representing her school today. So thank you, Elaine.
Good evening, School Board Chair Peterson, School Board members and Superintendent Carrera. I'm Elaine Luckenbaum, I'm the principal here at Hogan Cedars and I'm proud to present our school improvement plan for the school year. At Hogan Cedars, we currently have four hundred and ninety students, which is about a hundred less students than we have had in previous years due to the school boundary changes from last year. We have fifteen different languages spoken here at our school. For special education, we have about almost fourteen percent of our students economically disadvantaged. We're at about fifty-two percent. And I would suspect that that would be a little bit higher, but this number really represents the students and families that have filled out the paperwork. So I suspect we have a little bit more than that. English language learners, we're about at nineteen percent. When we look at our subgroups, our highest subgroups are Hispanic students at almost thirty-seven percent and white students at almost fifty, excuse me, forty-seven percent. When I think about what makes us unique, there's many things here at Hogan Cedars that make us unique. But I think of our culture, the collaboration that we have with students, staff and families, and the clarity and quality of our instruction. Our motto here at Hogan Cedars is engaging hearts and minds. And we take that very seriously, that we really want to engage students with their hearts. We want students to be kind and compassionate and caring individuals. But we also want them to engage their minds with academics and reading and writing and math skills and really grow in that area as well. And we are home of the hawks and we are proud of it. What we're celebrating right now is just our incredible focus on student engagement. As I think about this past year, just how many different teams and individuals we have really had to really reach out to students to engage students in learning here at Hogan Cedars. The other thing we're really celebrating right now is we now have a combination of EGBSD online students and hybrid students. And we have students back in the building and it has been a journey and it is joyous to have them back here at Hogan Cedars. When you look at our attendance trends over the past few years, there are slightly lower percentages than we've had in the past when we look at this year, due to just having kids online and having CBL with a comprehensive distance learning. When you look at our academic trends, both for third grade and fifth grade in both I-ready reading and I-ready math, they're just slightly below the district average. But we are working hard in those areas to show growth in those and let me show you that on the next slide. Our goal number one for our school improvement plan is in the area of math and looking at those statewide tests. We really want to improve those as we look at our students in the area of math. We have some key strategies and one of those key strategies, both in math and ELA, is in the area of teacher clarity. We really want students to know what they're learning, why they're learning it and how they'll show that they've learned something. We also have a strong multi-tiered system of supports where we really look and analyze data through an equity lens and we really provide interventions to all students. We also use Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures and all K through five classrooms to really increase student engagement. And that's where we feel that we can really get the true learning to happen when students are engaged. Our second goal is in the area of ELA or reading and math. We use those same strategies that I just talked about in the area of math. But we also have specific programs that we look at for reading, for phonemic awareness and also just core reading instruction. The other thing I really want to share is that we, I think one of our strengths is that we really implement consistent reading intervention strategies across the building and we continue to look at those as a staff. And when you look at behavior trends, that's part of our climate. This is just looking at one year, last year, we had no referrals or this, I should say this past school year due to having students online, but it's something that's really important to us. So let me show you this next slide, which is goal number three, looking at our climate. We continue to just want a really, really positive school climate here at Hogan Cedars. So there are several things to do with that. We're really known for a soft start here at Hogan Cedars. So we really check in with students and really focus on their social emotional growth as students come into the building. And then having community circles, whether that be online or when students are back for hybrid. And we continue to practice mindfulness in every single classroom, every single day. When, some of my closing thoughts are, we are just proud of our journey this past year. We have worked incredibly hard to engage our students and we're really proud of it. And you can see some pictures of some of our students and one of our teachers teaching here for hybrid. Last year, I decided to retire in March and then April came and I changed my mind. I wanted to bring kids back into the building and we've done that here at Hogan Cedars and we have done that across the district. I, I just want to say that I'm really proud to be a part of the Gresham Barlow School District. And I just really want to thank you for your continued support to our schools and our community. And with that, have a great evening.
Thank you. Do any of our board members have questions or comments?
I really am retiring this year.
I did have just clarification question. What, how, how do you define major referrals at an elementary school?
There's, yeah, and you know what? It's been a whole year since I've even had one. A major referral is when it is a major disruption to a classroom and learning. It could be something, it could be physically that somebody kicked or hit, it could be disrespect to somebody. There, there's kind of guidelines for our PBI system that we have it all lined up. Yeah, it's bigger than just crossing the line. We also have what we call minor referrals where they just kind of cross the line. It's like, we just want a reminder to students and to families like, hey, let's really watch that. So major referral is kind of a big deal.
And I'm guessing that doesn't include our special ed students?
For this year or?
Do those include?
Yeah, you know what? They are usually on a different system where we're looking at behaviors differently because they have specific learning goals and objectives in that area and certain strategies that we're using. So yeah, that really doesn't impact every once in a while, if it really goes across that line and then it could be a referral, but not often. Not often. That's a great question.
Yeah, and how regularly do staff analyze that data?
In a normal school year, because we haven't had any referrals, we have a PBIST meeting every month. And we look at that and we look at that as far as equity, just across all different subgroups. And we really find that we're giving referrals for behaviors that need referrals. And for me, the biggest thing is making sure that we communicate to kids and families and we make changes, so they don't happen again. We're feeling with our really positive climate and our soft start that that's really changing across our building, we're really proud of what we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hello, Chris.
Yes, 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 I'll believe it when I see it. So when you are actually having your party, we will have that. So I've been to some of your cultural events when you have them at the school. How during the CBL, the comprehensive distance learning, have you maintained some of those cultural opportunities for families and for kids?
That is a great question. I'd say that we're, continue to work on it, but it looks very different. Materials pick up, then we have goodie bags and we invite all families. Amazing how all families come, we've really done outreach to families and kids. But have we had any really cultural experiences? Not really during this time. And I think for this spring, as we talked about as a staff, I think that's hard to do. So I was about to say, I can't wait till next year, but maybe that's for different reasons. But we will be able to do that next year when we come back. Yeah, but thank you for noticing that we have done a lot in the past with that. Yeah, but thank you for noticing that we have done a lot in the past with that. Thank you.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Can I tell you, I'm a little bit excited. I love the school district, and I'm very proud to be a part of it.
Well, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Director Stowers?
Yeah, I as well want to say congratulations on.
Thank you.
This is really exciting. And also, you know, this is more of a comment for the board of just making sure that when we set clear goals and we want to track certain things like disparities within our disciplinary action and our academic achievement, that we're tracking it, and that's more accurately reflected consistently among all presentations. So that's something that, you know, working on this in the future, that hopefully that we can provide more support and what we're looking for and what we want to see. But thank you so much for all your work. This was a great presentation, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I just want to say congratulations on retiring too. That's it, and thank you.
It's been 39 years in education, so yay, 15 years in Gresham Barlow, and I'm proud of it.
That's amazing. Great job. Thank you.
So I have kind of a general question. It showed up in seeing some of the graphs that we've seen on the academic trends, and there's the black line that shows Gresham Barlow, and then there are the individual lines that show by school. And I'm not sure if I'm looking at it right or what I'm looking at, but it seems that if the Gresham Barlow line is larger than all of the other individual schools, somebody out there is pushing the numbers up. Somebody else is doing better. Somebody just raised their hand and said it's their school. But just wondering, you know, if they're doing better, can we copy that and use it someplace else? But just kind of, if you could speak on that a little bit, is that you, Mr. Cook, maybe, or?
It's me for the evening, yes, and absolutely, Chris. We share ideas all of the time between buildings and what can be replicated, what should be replicated. It also depends on the building and the makeup and demographics of kids too. But absolutely, we should, we continue to look at each other and see what we're doing well and what we're not doing well also. We can learn a lot from that.
I was just going to add to that. Chris, you're absolutely right in the sense that when you look at data and you see who's doing well and progressing, you want to know, hey, what are they doing that we're not doing? I can promise you that our principals, along with our instructional leadership team, they do do that. The fortunate fact, and I will say fortunate because all of our kids are not the same, and the diversity of our students throughout the district is definitely a treasure for us. And I'm not saying that it makes things harder, but it does make, they're not all the same. So you have to meet kids where they are, and I know that each of our staff members are trying to ensure that they do that to ensure that our students are all succeeding. And I would actually challenge to look at the growth of an individual student and the cohort of them as opposed to the overall, simply because of the fact that, you know, I may have finished last year at 38%, but this year, you know, I'm at 61. Now, some may or may not see that as progress, but I see it as great progress for an individual student. And so drilling down in that manner really does help see a larger picture. The students who are excelling, and I will say this out loud too, that students who are really excelling, their growth is not as much from year to year as opposed to a student who is really struggling. And so I really do applaud all of our faculty and staff regarding that. But I would encourage us to look at, continue to look at growth of students.
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you to our five principals tonight. I thank you for your efforts to continue reaching out to our families, especially our families who are not engaged at this time, looking at differentiation of what works culturally for our different families, using our liaisons who are amazing. I know they're working extra hard this year, so remember to thank them, appreciate them. And thank you. Thank you for staying one more year too. We're moving on to our discussion items. Does our board, I know we only have four of us here tonight, do we need a break or can we continue? Okay, we'll continue then. Yeah, so our principals.
Yes, so those of you who presented, thank you this evening, and you are welcome to exit, with the exception of our Gordon Russell principal, because I think he's part of the discussion.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our first discussion item, item C1, and that is, Mr. Cook also?
Yes, ma'am. Members of the board requested a review of the mascot and Native American artwork in use at Gordon Russell Middle School. The principal, Roland Hayden, has begun a review process by connecting with previous staff members to discuss the history of the school and connection to the mascot, artwork, and culture. He has also reached out to Native American artists who specialize in local tribal art as well as the local tribal communities to evaluate the artwork and ask about appropriateness. Principal Hayden will provide the board with an overview of the work that has been completed and will review what next steps are planned in this process. Yes, Principal Hayden, please.
All right, got you. Just going to go ahead and say it, honestly, this desk is not tall enough, okay? Just going to throw that out there that my knees keep running into this stuff. Well, thank you for having me. I will say that about, in the fall, I was given a request by Lisa and John and Jordan to kind of look into the appropriateness and the connection of the Native American artwork to the Gordon Russell School community, specifically the artwork that's up on the walls and its kind of heritage and where it came from. Honestly, I, in my mind, you get stories along the year. You get stories as you join into a building, and I've kind of learned some things along the way. Going through the bond process actually added to that storage because stories, because you end up looking at the walls and you're talking about painting, and you're talking about should this stay or should this go? And we kept intentionally all the Native American artwork through the painting process, but honestly, anything that was a 70s motif, I painted over. So I apologize if I offended anyone with that. So I went through this process, and I would like to go through this document. It's shared with you. It's the same, but I also want to make reference to as I went through this. This has not been an easy process, so I have lots of documentation that's not represented on this sheet as how much research that I have done in this. So my first inkling was to reach out to staff that have, that opened the building. Gordon Russell Middle School is about 42 years old. So I reached out to Linda Eby. She did not open the building, but she was there, I think, the second or third year of its opening, if I remember correctly. And so I reached out to her, and I wanted to know a little bit about how the Native American artwork in the building was added to the building. And so in your, in your board docs, you should have a link, the hyperlink in the top has pictures and kind of explanations about where specific artwork. Amanda's not in her head, so you do have this, okay? So I wanted to know a little bit about, you know, how did the art originally get put up? Who originally put it up? Some of the artwork is signed, I will tell you that. So some of it in the very low right-hand corner, I could have offered a picture of it, you get a small signature, and some of it is not signed, but presumably put up at the same time. So when I talked with her, I talked with her about the totem poles. I talked with her about how they originally came to the building. I talked with her about the artwork. I talked with her about any kind of connections that we've had through the years through Native American tribes coming through the building. And certainly, she recalls many assemblies, and we haven't had some recently, but we've had many assemblies where Native American tribes are coming in. The new friendship dances was the typical one that there was participation in, and certainly tribal culture presentations in the building. So that was not an uncommon thing. I did ask, it's anecdotal, but I understand that. Do you reckon, reckon in those interactions, have you ever had anyone bring up any concerns? And the answer was no. So I also reached out to Ron Hudson, who is a legend in the community, who is also a retired PE teacher. He opened the building. He was there on the original opening. He remembers seeing Jenny Starr, who did most of the motifs on the wall, and appears to be of Native American descent. And that's going to come up later when I have conversations about some next steps. But he remembers the totem pole that's in the picture that's not painted was carved by an individual with the chainsaw different times, onsite with PE students all just standing around watching. So that's, that's how this was. So he tells this long story, and I know I don't go into a major story here, but I'm just telling you like, this is what, he was there, bunch of kids were all around, guy with the chainsaw. Did he, was he a Native American? Didn't appear to be a Native American. Okay, so I kind of made note of that. Then Mike Reed, who also opened the school, retired PE teacher, and he remembers conversations about how the totem pole. So again, I'm trying to piece a history together for everyone, how the totem poles ended up in the commons. So there are two totem poles in the commons. The one that was carved outside, like I described, actually used to be outside. It lived outside until someone stole it. It was taken, and this is a story that I got from Mike Reed, and a police officer called him. He went to pick it up. He got it repaired. They decided to install it in the commons so it wouldn't get taken again. So of course, that's a longer story, but I'm giving you the, you know, the Cliff Notes version. So that's how one of them got installed in the, in the commons. The other one was installed upon the death of a former superintendent, which the school is named after. So that is the one that is painted, and that one was created by Gordon Russell himself. So his connection to Native American tribes or culture, I did not inquire. I'd have not called the Gordon Russell family. But I know he has, through Dartmouth, he has, he has a Native American Studies program. And so I know he has, there's a lot of connection there, but I certainly have not reached directly out to the family about that particular pole. So my outreach, the first person I got ahold of was Rose Pixley of the Slits tribe. I talked to her about multiple things. Talked to her about the Thunderbird and her, and honestly, I go into this conversation. I just, you know, wanted to, where are the Thunderbirds? I was a little taken back by her response because I didn't know what, honestly, I didn't know what her response would be. So I just said it, and she responded, oh, how cool. And I thought, okay, all right, okay. So then I just kind of walked through the conversation. We have this artwork on the wall, the appropriateness of it. I believe most of it, if not all, was originally put up by a Native American. It is based off of motifs that are either variations of a theme. So I would describe it as like music that has, you know, changed over time. It's variations of a theme. Because even the artwork of the motifs can be traced back to originals, which I think this is the book. Because we, you know, you, when you have an old school, you can kind of go through and you find weird things. Not that this is weird, but you just find things that are kind of in closets, and you're like, what is this? And then you, and then you start to connect some dots. So we were able to connect some dots through some of the history of just the building. So talking with her, she connected me through the superintendent Shemawa Schools, which to me seemed like a good connection since they're also a school, Shemawa Indian School, it's just outside of Salem, and seemed like a good connection. So the superintendent put me in connection with Marshall Burnett, which is the cultural leader of the Shemawa Indian School and a member of the Northern Plains and Cota Tribe. So I have been on the phone, and though there's kind of two separate bullets, I have talked with him a half dozen times. I've sent multiple texts. I typically send him pictures. I've asked him to come into the building. He's not comfortable yet with the COVID, but he's certainly planning on bringing a class of students down and kind of partnering with us. When I talked with him, he, his, I've shown him pictures of the artwork, and I've talked to them about the totem poles. And I know that there's conversations about both things, so I'm trying to keep them separate. But when I talk with both of them, they don't tend to separate them, so it's very difficult for me, you know, to, well, let's talk more specifically about this. So when I talk with them about the artwork, he certainly has expressed after viewing the artwork the importance of keeping it. That, that seems to be really adamant, even if it's a variation of a theme. And I've talked with them about how do we appropriately have that up in a school and make a stronger connection of it to the school community. I talked with him about the, I kept going back to the poles, and I've done that a few times. And even I talked with him maybe two weeks ago. And, and he said that he would, he wanted to go check in with some other elders at the school. He got back to me, sent me a text. He said that he felt like the elders are saying that it was appropriately, and I kind of quoted in there, that the, and I just took it from what he sent me. Our trusted elders at Shemawa feel that the pictures are representing the coastal tribes of Washington and Northern Oregon. So I kind of, I kind of took it a little bit further with him. I said, and I appreciated that his elders are feeling that way. But, you know, I, so I said, who, who could I connect with maybe specifically about the carvings? You know, I'd like to know more about the carvings as it relates to kind of the local, the local artwork. And the local artwork, to be, to be honest with you, is identified kind of on the first page of multiple different tribes. So if you see on the first page, the mostly around the Haida Nation is, and the Tlingit tribes, those are most of the artwork in the building, which I believe is also kind of connected to the poles because both of those tribes tend to have poles in their history. So his suggestion, last time I talked to him, and I'm not done talking with him because our partnership is going to continue. He said that he thinks that a good connection will be to talk to Bobby Mercer at the Grand Ron tribe. I called and left a message for him. I've not heard back. I plan on sending an email. I feel like he, the elders at Shemawa Indian School and him felt like he knows a lot more about kind of that particular localized culture and felt like that he'd be a good connection for us to kind of, kind of walk that path, especially when talking around the poles in the school. So our equity team at our school has been meeting. We've been talking about the artwork in the building. Actually, one of the, one of the pieces of work was to put this together, this, this sheet, so we can start the identification process. And then especially with Senate Bill 13, take, take what we have and add it with the Senate Bill 13 and really make it, you know, a school that embraces what we have been given from previous, you know, generations of people that took, to put the art up on the walls. So for us, I think that's, that's a pride point and something I think we can move forward. So as a conclusion, kind of where I'm at in this process, and certainly I'm on a path, talking to you about this path, and certainly feedback's always important, and you know, and the superintendent, I've shared this with her, and I know she, she has been supportive of this path of kind of continuing. And if there's different directions I need to go, I'm certainly here, here to listen. But right now, our plan is to continue to work on identifying the appropriateness of the poles. And I think that's ultimately going to get down to specifically what tribes they specifically connect with and kind of a reach out to those tribes. That's my personal belief as I've gone through this journey. As for the artwork, the preservation status would be that we appropriately, just like in an art museum, be identifying. So if someone walked up to it, you could, just like it kind of started on this piece that you see in front of you, you'd say, oh, this, this art piece would. You'd say, oh, this, this art piece would be called a grouse, I put my glasses on, but they fog up with a mask. And then you'd say, you know, it's from a region of the British Columbia, the original artist. And kind of be able to connect the dots and, and ultimately hopefully put some, a little narrative about specifics of the tribe. So as it kind of go around the building would be the ultimate vision of the artwork in the building, so. Lastly, on the last is, this is something that we give to every staff member as they become staff members, it talks about the Thunderbird. Now the Thunderbird as folklore connects to many tribes, so it's not connected. And that was explained to me when I talked to Rose and it was explained to me when I talked to Mar- Marshall, is that. No, no one tribe, that's not a regional thing, that's not a really specific, that's a very broad, a broad mytho- mythological animal. That, that is embraced by lots of tribes and that it is appropriate to be using. In a school setting and which is also enforced in the ORS statute, which was last assessed in February, so. Kind of connecting all those dots. I guess the time now is for questions.
Members, questions, comments? We can go down the row, you, Robin and Chris.
Me? Alright, well, I would really recommend in this process. Getting tribal government permission to utilize these symbols, to utilize. This mascot, I think when it comes down to individual and the way we're explaining it. It's not really seen in a very holistic sense of, of what this means. Because the imagery itself can be very beautiful and it can accurately represent a certain image or culture. However, it doesn't take into account the history of the American education system. To the native indigenous people of the United States. We place people in boarding schools, we try to eradicate culture. We, you know, perform genocide on entire communities and even today. Indigenous culture and heritage is not very well represented within our academics systems. And moving forward, what I would really like to see, if we could get. Whatever tribal government, whatever tribal sovereignty jurisdiction that is, that is in this area. If we can get permission from those leaders. To utilize these symbols, this mascot, I would feel more comfortable with that. I don't feel very comfortable going out and like asking individual, what do you feel, what do you feel, what do you feel? I think that this is more of a. Of, of a partnership opportunity that we can really build on and, and gain the respect of our tribal partners. And really honor those, those relationships.
Certainly in my convers- is this thing still on? I just think it's a lot.
It's good, yeah.
Okay, sorry, certainly in my conversations, especially with the Shemau Indian School. The repression of Native Americans over the course of history. We talked about the Battle of Wounded Knee, we talked about a lot of things as it relates to. The marginalization, marginalization of Native Americans. And so I definitely can empathize and appreciate that. I don't feel like this has been an individualized conversation because I'm talking with the Shemau Indian School. They're a very large school, that's not very far from us. And so I don't know specifically about how that would be like getting govern- governmental, you know, a, a regional approval. We sit in kind of an, you know, we kind of try to define lines, so it, it. So in the history of diving into this. The different motifs that we have in the building don't necessarily mean that they're specific to the area that we're currently in. So we have motifs that fall all the way from the, off the coast of British Columbia. All the way down to probably Northern California. And so none of the artwork that's in here kind of even is representative of just kind of the native lands that we're standing on right now. So for us to, for, so my, my pathway would be that we connect with the individual tribes of the. Artwork that is represented on our walls, that, and that's really, that's why I call out the specific tribes. Is my intent is to connect with those tribes because that is the artwork that is, you know, that we're housed in, in our buildings.
Yeah, I, I think that's really interesting and potentially problematic as well, right? Is this, is this like in art institute and preservation of certain symbols and certain representations, right? Or are we really looking at building strong relationship with indigenous communities and looking at those communities holistically? And respecting their tribal sovereignty? That is a good question, is this a representation of art, right? Or is this an opportunity to build true collaborative partnership with our native partners?
And, and I would say the answer is both. So a- as far as the, you know, the, the latest Oregon revised statute clearly says that. Housing Native American artwork in a school is appropriate. But I, I'm suggesting we go a step further than that and connect with specific tribes to build those partnerships. Including the already partnership that I'm working on with Shemau Indian School. Another Native American school that is close that we can partnership and kind of move back and forth with. Because we have already talked about having assemblies together, so that is, that is something post-COVID. We're, we've already planned field trips, so I, I do think that that is what we're kind of describing right now.
Thank you, and I think Director Howard had a question or a comment?
Several. Thank you, I do appreciate that you have, and actually, is mine going or his is on? Okay, alright, I'll keep going. I appreciate that you wrote down, you know, as much information because sooner or later, the people that were involved will be gone. And so documenting that is, is the first thing. I'm also, I may bounce a little bit. Making sure also that students are aware of the significance of this, that they understand where, why and how this came from. I also. I think what we're looking at in some respects is there, and you kind of alluded to this, that there are two separate issues going on. It started with the conversation about the carved wood statues. And then you brought it in, rightfully so, into the rest of the mascot and the, the artwork that is on the building. And I think in the, the conversation, as I still have listened and, and heard what's being said. Is that in the people that you've talked to and the way that you are bringing forward the information. And the information about what a totem pole is, that the carved wooden statue from Gordon Russell doesn't fall within any of those guidelines. From the newspaper article, it talks about him carving it from a tree in his backyard because he thought it would look pretty. And the representation, a totem pole is a monumental pole. It represents a nation's family or individual's history, displays their rights to certain territories or songs, dances and other aspects of their culture. I don't see the thing that the first superintendent Gordon Russell carved fitting any of those. So to me, it feels if we're going to honor what you're looking at doing with how the Thunderbird came in, how the Thunderbird was designed. The people that are saying, yes, this, this is being respectful. I don't see where the wooden statue falls into that category, it's a pretty statue. But it's not a totem pole and I, I'd kind of like for us to stop calling it a totem pole because it's not a totem pole. He's not Native American, he didn't do it with Native American intent, he carved a pretty statue. And so from that, I think we have some room still to go. The other one, the one that's not painted, I don't know as much about that one, it sounds like, you know, that one was carved in front of the kids. But who did it and how and why, I don't have information on that one. So I, I appreciate the work that's been done and I appreciate that in the, the ORS, it does talk about. Specific items and mascots that are not to be used and likewise, it talks about others that are part of the Northwest Region. Which does include things like the, the Thunderbird and it talked about a couple of other. The buffalo, the eagles, that those were more available as mascots with that collaboration with. The, the local culture as well as the broader culture. The final part of it, even in how we have our conversation about the Native American Studies and trying to bring that more forward. The first thing that people say is, we talked about the federally recognized tribes. And we have tribes in Oregon that are not federally recognized, but they're still tribes. They either were denied access, have refused to do access, or have been told that they don't count. So I also get a little bit, as you can tell, I get a little bit concerned about saying, we're doing this with the federally recognized tribes. That's not the whole picture with it, so again, I'm, I'm, I am pleased that we brought this forward. And, and I still would like for us to, to continue and dig a little bit deeper and, and put the wooden statue in storage. And, and then move on with the further conversation, as Robin said, the further collaboration with our local partners as well as. As the ones that are farther out because people move throughout our region as well. And so we want to make sure that we are honoring a variety of our, our indigenous culture.
Anything else from anyone else?
Can I add a little bit to that?
Yes.
And certainly, certainly, you know, recognizing that. The broader sense of borders and lines are something that. It, it's definitely kind of a. A white culture putting it, okay, well, these are the lines and we've defined them and that's certainly. One of Rose brought me a connection actually to an app that it's called, it's called Native Lands. You can download on your phone, you can pull it up, it can tell you where you're at and kind of, it also broadly draws lines. And so if you're using that app, which I have used and downloaded. It, it, it kind of puts us in a position where we're, we're still not even. Trying to connect with a local tribe, it doesn't really, we're on a border of a couple. And kind of overlapping because that whole definition of, of lines is always blurred, so, of, of native lands. And so respecting that's important, so I mean, I appreciate hearing that and, and talking about either. Federally recognized or not, it's still a native land that we're talking about, so I, I definitely appreciate that comment, so.
Um, I'm just kind of curious about how these conversations looked like in the line of questioning when you were reaching out to these individuals. For example, it says that, um, let me read this, where's one of them? Sorry, like he didn't express concern about Thunderbird being a mascot or anything. I'm kind of curious, like, when you brought that up, were you waiting for him to, are you waiting for these folks to say anything or? Like when you bring these subjects up?
No, and I, I, so connecting with Marshall, I think is what you're, Burnett. And so when I talked with him, I, I'm saying, you know, I'm generally describing our school. Honestly, I, I don't know how their reaction's going to be and I'm not gauging that I want a reaction. I just want them to be honest with what their opinions are, I don't, I'm not coming in with the. Whether I, I want, if it's, if, if someone ca- if, if Marshall said, I really have some major concerns. I would be echoing that in this moment, so my typical line of questioning is. Or, or conversation is, can I, let me, let me describe the school to you, let me describe what is in the building. So here are these paintings, some were painted back forty-two years ago. I believe there's a few, probably about three or four that were painted in the addition of ninety, ninety-six, ninety-four, somewhere in the mid nineties. There were some motifs added. I would, I, I want to know your impression of, is it appropriate to have these things up in a school? Tell, let me send you pictures and, and, and tell me from your perspective. As the cultural leader of Shemau Indian School. Is this, is this appropriate to be in a school setting? And the same thing with the totem poles, even more specifically, I kept kind of going, so. Tell me more about this and often our conversations would. Encompass lots of things, so when I describe the, the Battle of Wounded Knee. That was a twenty-minute conversation with them about the Battle of Wounded Knee. When he describes white men's repression and sterilization of Native Americans. Yeah, I, I've been in all of those conversations and, and I didn't go into those great details here. But I've certainly listened and learned from him and been open to any feedback. And his perspective. And, and I think in his, his wisdom that he's kind of granted me. And so when, when I'm asking questions and when he's, I'm kind of teaching me, to be honest with you. I'm very transparent in what the school looks like. I've offered for him to come, I asked him very much, I would like him to come tour the building. Even offered us, like, I'll pay for your gas, I'll just drive you down. But I said currently with COVID, but he does want to bring. One of his classes down and more specifically look at the building and that, that was important to him, so. And, and then even a broader sense, so I wanted to go a little bit further and that's why I said, are there other people that. You recommend or the elders at the Shemau Indian School recommend and that's kind of how it, the journey is still continuing, I guess, so.
Alrighty, I was just concerned how we were going about the questioning, like, can we keep this or is this responsible?
No, 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 I, I, I describe it and I've described it and then also text. I mean, that's been our best way to communicate, honestly, I just text them images. I've texted him pictures of the totem poles, I pictured not every single art piece, but like. I don't know, pull out my phone and look, but at least a half dozen of the same images that you're looking at. And describe kind of where they're at and I said, you know, what are you seeing? Do you have any concerns around this, what should I be doing to make this appropriate? His, his reaction has been about a concern of preserving the art is. He says he thinks it's important that we try to preserve it because it does represent Native American heritage, so. The, the line that is interesting to talk with him about is whether the art was originally by someone. Who was Native American or not and also that level of connection to a tribe. It's not a, it's not as binary as I would, you know, just. It would make it easier if it was just as simple as, oh, yes, you could, that's appropriate or that's not appropriate, you know, and the line was clear. Especially when we're talking about someone who creates the art, that's also not very clear. And so a lot of our conversations were talked, talking about connections to tribes. The value of art within the Native American community is that. That the connection to creating art is so strong. That, and that is a value where people feel like that's how they make their, their money or make, you know, a living at it. So to, to make income, so it's not unusual to have a lot of people kind of creating that art. And then kind of evaluating the appropriateness of it, it, it's just not, it's not as clean as what you're describing to saying. Is this appropriate, is this not appropriate, it just, I would, that's not been how those conversations tend to go. It's, it's a lot of learning on my part and through stories that I just described. About a forty-five minute conversation and a couple bullets, but I'm trying to distill it down to some kind of a few key points of. But I'm not going into the, all the other sides of the conversations, so. Do I feel comfortable that one hundred percent, I'm like, no, that's not my journey and that, that's not where I'm intending to go. But I want to make sure that what is there is appropriate. And if it's not, I'm not, I'm not advocating to keep something that's not appropriate, definitely that is not. I, I do not want that, I do not want that for our community, I do not want that for the Native American community, so.
Thank you.
I see, Robin, you want to go first or you want me to go first?
I was just going to ask, is there a decision-making component here from the board? Because I still feel very strongly that if we move forward with this, we need the approval of some native authority, whether that's to Chama, like, the Chama School Board, whether that is a tribal government, whether that is the N A A Board of Director, NARA Board of Directors, that we need to go deeper than than just individual perspectives. That this is really, there's a lot of perspectives on these pieces. And I would feel comfortable moving forward with, uh, keeping these symbolisms, if if that's what's, um, what is recommended, with the approval of some kind of authority, authoritative board, and especially a a native government would really support me to move forward. I really do appreciate the work that you're doing and the partnerships that you're you're forming with, um, these, uh, like the Chama School and other organizations. I think that is beautiful. I think field trips and connections and ways to partner is exactly what we need to do, whether we keep mascots or not. And to keep the mascots, I really, for me, I really think we need the support of some authoritative body.
Discussion item, um, he's not done with his research and I think Chris has something else to add.
Um, you just mentioned something a minute ago that I think is, is again, part of where there are two distinct things that are going on. I'm, I'm just going to go back to the carved wooden statue that there is an art component, perhaps Mr. Russell carved it as an art function. In that case, I would not ever call it a totem pole because it is not a totem pole. It's a piece of art. And that's part of making sure that students understand what's the difference between culture appropriation versus understanding, respecting and honoring someone else's culture and reflecting that. And and I think you kind of hit on that, that that might be something that could be further discussion, further looking at.
That's why I hope to talk with Bobby Mercer about it, who, um, from the Confederate Grand Ron Tribes. And I haven't talked with him yet, the, I feel like, um, based on both Rose and Marshall, that, uh, they both felt like he would be kind of the regional expert on the topic. So, um, that, I mean, I, that's, I mean, that's really kind of, I think, because I, I don't, I definitely am not the resident expert. No, I I'm learning along the way. So, um, I'm getting my guidance from people I connect with, so.
Well, thank you, um, as Director Sowers said and everyone else has echoed, thank you for the extra work, especially this year. Doing ex, this extra research is highly appreciated. And, uh, I mean, continue, continue the research and then maybe this will become an action item in the future as we learn more about the history of the school and how these items, um, ended up in our school.
So, uh, and thank you for acknowledging that because I'm transitioning kids on Monday. That's, you know, that's, that's the priority right now. This is important work, so, but yeah. My hope is, and I'll, I'll, I'll end with this, my hope is that, um, no principal stays in the school forever. But my hope is that as, as, uh, as fine, the final transition, as I leave someday, and that's, this is not an announcement, please don't take this as that. But my, the the goal would be that I leave and that whatever, either action item or non-action item or wherever we land with this, that future principals, future boards, that everyone's comfortable with, the, and the community that feel comfortable about what we're doing at Gordon Russell and what it's being represented as. And, uh, that that it's a positive thing, so.
Thank you for that and thank you for involving the equity team because I know, I know this is extra work this year. So thank you for that. And also maybe, um, I would encourage the equity team to start thinking of how, as we implement the ethnic study standards, how we can incorporate that hit, that true history, our Native American history into into our lessons and into our our classrooms. Okay, we're moving on to, um, action items. The first one is policy review. Sorry, I skipped, I skipped the discussion item. I skipped the return to learn update from Mr. Cook.
I can't believe you would miss this.
Yeah, I would never do that on purpose, Mr. Cook.
I will go through this quickly because we all understand the format. I have added a few slides this time as well. And I don't know, were you bringing that up, Sarah? Okay. What you see here is that, that slide that we usually take from our webpage. This is the fourteen-day average at Oregon uses to determine whether districts are ready for students to return. The fourteen days key, remember that for the next slides that I'm going to show you, or that, some slides, about two slides away that I'm going to show you. We are seeing an upward trend in the metrics as we are seeing nationwide and across the state as well. Positivity rates are rising as well as case rates. And you can advance that, Sarah, please. That still puts us, uh, in the return piece. But I, in red, I put up there, last time I gave the update, we were eighty-two per hundred thousand in Multnomah County. We're now at one thirty-nine point eight. So that's a pretty steep climb in a short amount of time. Clackamas is at a hundred and eight point two and we're at a hundred and seventy point eight. I believe it's a little blocked by that window up there. And then Multnomah County's positivity rate rose to three point five. At Clackamas' rose to six, although today's rates, they did drop again slightly, both of them. Next slide, please. This is another nonprofit website I use to do my daily measurements. It gives me a lot of, a lot more information that I can use on each day. Know that, uh, even today, this is a slide I put in from Tuesday, even today, it was a little bit better, but we're still seeing a rise. But you can see a summary of where the county is. When you look at infection rate and you, that's that second number over. The infection rate's key. We don't hear it very often. It's how many people are infected by an infected person going forward. And when you get up into the one point two, you start to be concerned. And you can remember the November shutdown, Clackamas County in particular was about a one point two eight. Now, that number looks high and it is, uh, and it did see some regression today, which was very welcome. Uh, and I'll get to a point at the end of this of why I'm showing all this to you. But if we could advance to the next slide, Sarah, please. That is the daily trend since November. So you can see that we are on a climb as we're seeing. Uh, and at the ten point eight per hundred thousand, there's eighty-seven point seven cases were reported on Monday. And that's what took us to a ten point eight per one hundred thousand case, um, case rate, pardon me. Next slide, please. The, as I advance my own slides. The, this slide for Clackamas, you can see they are much higher and they have been experiencing a high increase. And because we are a district that has schools in both counties, we have to keep track of both counties. Their infection rate today, though, did drop a bit and so did their positivity rate. So I don't, you can't call one day drop a trend, uh, but it does make me happier every day when I get to see that. And the next slide, Sarah, is their case rising. And you can see it is much steeper than Multnomah County's is. And they're at fifteen per hundred thousand, they had eighty-two point nine cases that day, uh, on Monday, which this graph gets updated on that next day, so that's Tuesday. So they are on a steep climb and it is concerning. If you could advance to the next slide, Sarah. There's a couple of the things out there right now, too, that I've started to dig into that I don't want rumors and inaccurate information to get in the way of discussions as we, um, keep moving down our path to hybrid. Children do more easily contract that new variant. What I did learn over the weekend, as I read, because I had nothing else to do, is that the olfactory mechanisms inside of children are are less developed and they don't develop fully until the teens and even into the twenties for some. There's something called an ACE two receptor, um, that is what COVID grabs onto in your nose. And because of their underdeveloped ACE two receptors, that's why children don't get sick very often. This new variant is pretty aggressive in how it grabs onto that receptor. What I've heard and what I've heard people talking about, even educators saying that because kids haven't been exposed, their immune systems are weaker, which is why they're getting this disease. And that's not accurate. It's really about physiology and that's why they're getting this. The other piece is, if you really dig into the information, is aside from the new variant, which is also attributed to a lot of this case rising, we have the lessening of restrictions and people traveling, people doing other things. It's also contributing to this rise, too. So I want to be clear about that. There's also a recent article, they, of the hundred and sixty through sixty-three breakthrough COVID cases. It alarms people, but really what it didn't do is it should reassure people. If you have a hundred and sixty through breakthrough, a hundred and sixty-three breakthrough cases out of the seven hundred thousand Oregonians that were fully vaccinated, that's a point zero 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 two three failure rate for the vaccine, which makes it the most effective vaccine in human history. And we are seeing that across the nation. So I don't want that statistic to be used inappropriately, uh, given that it really is a measure of success. So the vaccine is, if you get it, is extremely effective, is what that says. Last thing, as I'll remind you on that last slide, these are the things we've put in place to make sure that kids are safe. And now I'll get to the point of the presentation, we, for the board's information, not that you wouldn't have already deduced this. We do expect that there will be cases amongst kids and there will be amongst staff. And we will continue to diligently enforce these protections to make sure that those are minimized as much as possible. And and with these in place, I believe they will be minimized as much as possible. But we're preparing ourselves for those and we will react accordingly and we will react quickly when it does happen. Okay? Alright.
Questions or comments for Mr. Cook?
Um, I know, I think it's starting April nineteenth, they're loosening who's going to be available, who who's eligible for vaccines. Are they, do they have enough supply that that's actually going to start increasing the number of people who at least get one shot started?
I have not paid attention to the supply, Director Howes, I can't answer that question for you today.
We appreciate the update, Mr. Cook, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here.
Oh, Superintendent Prey.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a note here, since I know that we have an audience as well of incorrect information that was reported in a newspaper regarding COVID cases. There was a report that we had two cases at North, North Gresham Elementary School, which is, is not accurate. So I want to make sure that that is, um, you know, noted in the minutes as well as the fact that it occurred when we, we were on C D L. So, and then the other was, um, there was a case that was, they said it was reported from San Barlow of a student, which is also inaccurate. Uh, we had a, a student at Gresham High School, not Barlow. And in all instances, we followed our communicable disease protocols and ensured that, um, you know, everyone who had had exposure at whatever level was quarantined and taking the appropriate steps and were communicated with. I just wanted to make sure I correct that for the record.
Dr. Prey, would you like me, there's, okay.
Is our football, Gresham, was it Gresham or Barlow football? That was postponed because of cases.
It was Gresham High School, Director Sowers. It was Gresham, not, not Barlow.
Okay, are we back?
Yes, we're back, but the season has concluded. Football season has concluded. There's no makeup necessarily if the the season ends. Um, and I think we'll experience this the remainder of the year where we'll have, when there's a case on a team, we have to, uh, by direction of our, uh, Multnomah County Health Authority in conjunction with, um, Oregon Health Authority, follow those regulations. Uh, they determine those things, not, not the school district. But, uh, we definitely have to implement those. So yes, then we are now in season three. And I, I would like to tell you that we probably won't have cases, but I, I also know that, um, there's a lot of interaction with individuals in sports. The students are still required to wear their mask. And again, that's, that's a requirement from, uh, that's beyond our control, truly. I would, I know it's hard to run and play with a mask on. However, I'm finding it hard to talk right now, so. But nonetheless, I know that, um, our student athletes, they're also practicing with them. So it kind of gives them a little bit of conditioning with that. Uh, that doesn't necessarily make it easier, but I do know that they're somewhat adjusting to those things.
Thank you.
Thanks for the updates and we're moving on to our action items tonight. The first one is a policy review. This is a first reading, so there's no formal action required at this time. And this is going to be presented by Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. So tonight, uh, the administration is going to ask for input from, uh, the board at tonight's work session regarding, uh, the policies that the Policy Review Committee had met on April first and is bringing forward for conversation and for first reading. And those policies, those three policies are in your packets, Policy F F, naming of new facilities, Policies F F A on memorials, and Policy I N D B, flag displays and salutes. And so those packets, uh, policies are in your packet. We can start with the first one on naming new facilities. And if you look at the policy in red, uh, the Policy Review Committee had made some changes. The first one noting around the board will use an equity framework and give preference, uh, given to names associated within the community. And then, of course, the other change in red that has to do with pursuant to O A R five eighty-one's zero two one zero zero four seven, facilities will not use names associated with or significant to, uh, American tribes unless the school district enters into an approved written agreement with the recognized Native American tribe in Oregon. And so those are the two changes within Policy F F, naming of new facilities. And I would ask, uh, Director Sowers, Director Orozco Beach and Directors, how it, as they also serve on the Policy Review Committee for their input.
I think this particular one was, was relatively straightforward. We did have a follow-up conversation about perhaps reviewing the names of some of our existing buildings and putting together committee and and comment about, um, perhaps renaming some of our existing buildings as has been done in other school districts.
Yes, and I want to just echo, this is tied back to the last conversation. And I'm really reflecting and thinking that this is an appropriate language to use that, um, we need, uh, tribal, what does this say? Facilities will not use names associated with significant or Native American tribe unless the school district enters into an approved written agreement with that federally recognized Native American tribe in Oregon. And I think that should be upheld for any negotiations and any work we do with, um, our tribal work.
I have a question for the Policy Committee. So this is our first reading, uh, so there's no action tonight. So when do we expect to?
I think this particular one, can it go forward to our next, uh, business meeting consent agenda for approval?
Now and then, um, I would like, maybe, I mean, I don't know if I would talk to you, Superintendent Prey, or, um, Mr. Hugh or Mr. Cook, um, in terms of, for displaying the flags, I would like to hear from our teachers and how they feel about having new flags in their classroom. Do they feel prepared to have discussions about what the flags mean?
Let's, 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 let's get to that, like, we've kind of jumped ahead.
Yeah, so we're just talking about right now, just F F.
Yeah, and so two more, and two more, Myra.
So F F looks good, move it on to consent agenda. Although I do, I know it's taken from statute, but I don't like the word that says federally recognized because it would be any of the tribes that are in our area recognized or not.
I agree, Chris. I agree, Chris.
I'm gonna put that on notice, Robin, that you agreed with me.
I agree with you all the time.
Dark chocolate or milk chocolate?
Dark.
Also, the next one up is memorials.
So the next one is policy FFA, and that has to do with memorials. And as you can see, the changes in red where it states that the board will use an equity framework when considering the acceptance of memorial. Well, and then it gives the different definitions. The other change is a principal may receive items for the school as a memorial to the student or person. So those are somewhat changes that I think the Policy Review Committee wanted to have further conversation about. And I will ask the board directors on the Policy Review Committee to to share their perspectives.
So this policy seemed to have two separate things going on with them. It had the memorials of typically it uses the word memorial scholarship for someone. And then it also talks about a room or item or space in our buildings, around our buildings, near our buildings that have been named formally or informally for staff members or other important people in the community. And I remember one of the conversations that we had about this was whether or not there was ever a time limit on it. And was it in perpetuity? For instance, the Stapleton Field at Gresham High School, I don't, I don't even know who that is. But likewise, when we redid North Gresham Elementary, rebuilt it, the old facility had the library name for Judy Doherty. And I think that went away. So we're inconsistent in how we are tracking names of things and whether or not all of them that have come through. The gym at Barlow, the secondary gym, is that still named for Fred Hilevis? So, so some of them I know, some of them I don't. And so we talked about, should there be a limit? Should there be a time limit? We didn't know. It was kind of a, so you're looking like you're putting your button on there, Mr.
I was just gonna help you out with Stapleton Field. That's a former mayor. I think he was the second or third mayor of Gresham.
So did he have anything to do with the school district?
That I'm not sure of, but I know he was, I believe he was mayor during the first big building, the first two or three story building, the brick one in nineteen fifteen.
I think I'd just like to have a little bit more, you know, maybe even just splitting out, you know, the paragraph that we're talking about, it's memorial slash naming or memorials naming within buildings because that was kind of a different, the memorial was naming someone who wasn't there anymore versus someone that, and does the same thing apply? I think I noticed at Gordon Russell that the counseling center is named for Linda Eby. Is she still?
She is not still employed, but she, I think she retired three years ago.
But she's still alive?
Yes.
So we named a area after someone who was alive. Again, our previous policy says we don't do that. And so I'd like to have similar language that we don't do memorials for someone who's still alive. So that might be an addition that we need to put into this policy then. Because I don't recall the one for Linda Eby coming to the board.
So and then, Mr. Hugh, the third one, like this place in Salute's?
Yes, thank you.
No, you're still gonna work on your.
Does it need minor work? Can we do, can we agree that it needs to have language that says a memorial naming will not be a live person? At least at the very, so that it's consistent with our other. And then the other part we can, we can deal with in an AR, but I'd like for this one to at least say we don't name a building or a space after a living person.
I don't know, Sarah.
Chris, I'm supportive of that. We didn't discuss that in the Policy Committee, but I would be supportive of saying, don't name something after a living person. So if we want to take that back to, or if we have to like pull it off and and revise that to update that language, I'm supportive.
Or yeah, take it back before the meeting.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, so we're not taking an action tonight, but it can go back to the committee, Robin, and or yeah, so that you can make those revisions.
I don't think we have to take it back to the committee. The committee's here. It's Chris, myself, Amanda. If we're all supportive of just adding that language and moving forward, I'm I'm supportive of leaving it on and just moving forward with what's the language, not being named after a living person?
I will make the change as requested by the board and and so it will be changed for the the next board business meeting.
Okay.
So it can be put on the consent agenda.
All right.
Thank you.
And then the final policy for review was policy INDB. And that was regarding flag displays and salutes. And as you can see, there's three different changes currently. There's the Oregon law requires allows for the United States flag, the Oregon flag and the National League of Families, which is the POW MIA flag. And then there's a request to add in the pride flag and the Black Lives Matter flag. That's the first recommended change in the second paragraph. The district shall obtain and display a United States flag and Oregon flag, a National League of POW MIA flag, a progressive pride flag and Black Lives Matter flag of an appropriate size for classrooms. And then the third recommended change is students shall receive instruction in respect for the the national flag and the provided an opportunity, the United States flag at least once a week by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. They will instruct on native land acknowledgements and have the opportunity to recite it. At least one student shall learn the United States National Anthem and the Black National Anthem. Lift every song, voice, or excuse me, sing. And I think there's also included in your packet, the actual words to that as well. So that's for discussion as well.
Comments from the committee?
I'm very proud of this work. We had a very in-depth conversation about Black Lives Matter and the potential backlash that we could face from the community. And what was decided at the Policy Committee is that we need to support our diverse communities and we need to make a stance regardless of of the anger that other people might feel. Black Lives Matter, we believe, is a human rights issue and that this is something that as a district, if we're going to support, that we need to make a strong statement.
Okay, um, I know we had quite a conversation about this. It came about because the policy used to just have the two, the United States flag and the Oregon flag. And we realized that under statute, it was missing the POW MIA flag. And then, and then we had the conversation about how do we show inclusiveness for our staff? How do we show inclusiveness for our students? And, and I do, I'll just say, I do have some, I hate to say issue because that makes it sound like it's a bigger thing than it is. Typically, I've thought a government flag pole, a government facility flies a government flag. However, that was before we had in the space of two weeks from our last policy meeting. More young men, more people, black shot, killed. And so I think, I think my thoughts on this are changing that whether there are some people uncomfortable about it, we need to have that conversation and need to have it be something that we provide support for the conversation. What I don't want to have happen is drop the flag in the classroom, whether it's the progressive pride flag or the Black Lives Matter flag, drop it in the classroom for the teacher who is not prepared to answer the questions, to talk to students and be able to. Their equity training is moving along, but I don't want it to be for them to do it incorrectly and make it not as effective as it could be. I'm not quite sure what an appropriate size is. It says that in the policy, but it's, you know, whether or not some are smaller, some are bigger. And I think it's, it's something that that we need to address. So that's at least on the first two parts of that. So I'm gonna stop now for a second.
So I just want to clarify, Chris, you had said that you're supportive of the Black Lives Matter and the progressive pride flag to be flown outside of the facility, but not inside the classroom.
That isn't what I said. I said as far as inside the classroom, I want to make sure that we provide additional support for our teachers.
Okay, so we, you're thinking more support for the teachers, but for outside, there's no additional support. You're supportive? I just want to know how to move forward with this and where we need to work on.
It's sort of, it's a good question. And I kind of wish we were all in person to be able to see. It's hard. I'm not even sure if you can see me. I guess I'm here. Here I am. Yes, here I am. It's, I think without doing it, it's harder to have the conversation. Does that make sense? That if we put the flags up, then we can have the conversation. If we wait to have the conversation, then we'll just keep waiting. And I would like for us to be prepared as possible to have those conversations. We have students that are impacted by misunderstandings, confusion, not being treated equitably, that that we need to have, have more of that conversation. And if the flag assists that, then we can, I'm still, I'm still a little bit stuck in the, it's a government building. It's a government flag pole, but it's also our students that are here who need our support and our staff who need our support. So that's, that's where I am. And I would like on this one, I really would like for the other board members that aren't here to at least weigh in on this so that they can have their questions answered as well. So this one may conceivably, when we get to the business meeting with consent, it may get pulled off and have conversation at that point. But I would like to have at least those first two items with the flag itself.
Something, something that was discussed is as a board, we have certain values. And as a board, we need to make that statement. Do we support Black Lives Matter? Do we support the progressive pride flag? And we need to make sure that those values are amplified and clarified to the communities that we're in. And I just think that we need to sit with that.
Yep. Robin, I agree with you. I want to make sure that our staff and our administrators feel prepared to have those conversations with our community. I wouldn't do that to my staff. I wouldn't do that to my administrators. So I'm not gonna do it here either. I can display those symbols in my office and I did in my classroom because I felt prepared to have those conversations with parents, with kids, with colleagues. We don't know, I don't know if our staff feels that they're ready for that. So before I would tell them to do this, I want to know how they feel about it and I want to know what resources they need and what preparation they need for it.
Um, just in terms of like this prepping teachers and everything, I don't think it would take too much work, do you think? Because I feel like every single student, teacher would honor their black LGBTQ transgender.
We have a very diverse community and if you haven't been in a classroom with a hundred and sixty to two hundred different families and parents, you don't know how challenging those conversations can be. So I, that's why I'm trying to get teacher voice into for us to take into consideration when making a decision like this. Just like I like to take student voice when we're making decisions that affect them. And I I understand that this affects them. I understand what it means as a brown student to have these symbols in the classroom, what it means for, what it meant for me seeing them walking in. But I also know as a teacher and as administrator, what it means to have to confront and and have conversations with families that may not feel the same way I do. I understand what our values are as a school board. I just want to know what resources our teachers need before we do this.
Yeah, no, that's really cool. I asked if like, how much time you think we would need before we can really do this?
That's why I said earlier, when I, when I jumped ahead, that I wanted to hear from Dr. Perre in our leadership team, like what they think, what timeframe they think they need to to get us up.
Right, yeah. Well, first, I I will say that I definitely applaud some bold moves. But I, what I want to know too, I don't know what that would take. So I think talking to staff and what they need, because this is a new discussion. And I'm happy to provide them with whatever they need to do, but I can't give you a timeframe or what it would take because I don't know. I don't know what our staff mean. We have six hundred staff members. And so I would really like to chat with them first and find out what those needs are to feel supported in order to implement this. Because here's what I don't want to happen is that we have a policy or an AR or whatever it is. And we ask people to do, they're not ready to have those conversations. It's a, it will be a disaster and backlash. And I haven't experienced that with these sort of scenarios, but I've done it with technology where I've had to back up and start all over again because I did not provide staff with the appropriate training. Great ideas are great ideas, but they're only as good as the fidelity of those who are implementing them. And if you really want something to have a little efficacy and fidelity, done with fidelity, you really have to provide staff with opportunities to prepare, to respond, carry out conversations, etc. And I don't know where our staff as a whole is as with that. So I can't tell you how much time that would take. I can't imagine time being, it being a lot of time, however, I just don't know. I've never participated in a PD offset, so I would have to find out what that is.
But for example, staff training and board value, right, that these are really two different things. And if the board wants to set a precedent on these are our values, this is what we think is important as a board. If Amanda, Maida, Chris, Robin, if we are all like, hey, Black Lives Matter, we want to support these communities, LGBTQ, progressive pride, indigenous land acknowledgement, if we want to do this, we put it in policy to let staff know that these are our values. And we provide services to make sure that they are informed, that make sure that they have the resources that they need. But these are two processes that need to happen simultaneously with each other. It's not, we wait six months, seven months for certain training or so forth. This is a flag.
We did state our values and our beliefs in our anti-racism statement that was released about a year ago. So our values were very clear in that and our community knows what we believe in.
Great, and now we need to act. There is.
Without hearing from our staff and our community, what is it that they need? And to be prepared to have those conversations, I wouldn't throw a kid into a pool that they, if they don't know how to swim, and I'm not gonna do that to our teachers.
I'm not saying to do anything like that to our teachers. The conversation that you just started is very divisive. And what I'm saying is that at the same time that we have made this statement, that we are going to fly these flags, we are also going to provide appropriate training, support systems, whatever teachers need to move forward with that.
Yeah, I didn't say I didn't agree with flying the flags. I'm just saying I want more information before I vote on it or before I accept this policy. That's all I'm saying. I just want more information from the people who will have to handle those conversations. You're not gonna be in the classroom with them when they have to have these conversations. So I just want to hear from them first. That's all I'm asking.
So are, are we? So are we providing an additional burden to pass this policy than we do for other policies?
Yeah. And I think, I'm not, I'm not looking for input from the teachers. I'm looking for input from the superintendent on how this might roll out. And as I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about this as well, we may already have staff in our buildings that have either wanted to or have put these up. And this would show very strong validation for what they're trying to do. And, and it says that, yes, you are doing it before, before you got ahead of us. And, and it may be, and Robin, you can weigh in on this one, but it may be on that second paragraph, the district shall obtain its flag, Oregon flag, and the POW flag. And I don't know why the POW one, if they have to be in the classroom. I think currently in the classroom, the only one we have to have is the United States flag. Is that correct? Mr. Cook shaking his head. And perhaps any of those others, would it dilute or that they could have the choice or the flags would be available for them for their classroom? Or is that soft pedaling too much? You want it?
Well, what we had discussed in the meeting was that this is going to be an evolving conversation, right? Black Lives Matter is a very strong, powerful movement that we have right now. There is very strong symbolism connected with this. But it's not like this is it. It's about inclusion, and it's about including other students' identity, other community identities, and making sure that we are keeping up with the times, that we are not just stagnant and saying, oh, even if we choose these three flags or however many flags, that this is it, that this is an evolving conversation. But we need to start somewhere and we need to act.
And I think you actually bring up a good point that I'm not sure as many people know. The Black Lives Matter conversation, movement, and effort is not recent. It started, was it 10 years ago, 11 years ago, with Trayvon Martin? And that was where it started. So it's not anything that's been within the last couple of years. It's been going on for a while. And so for people who may not know that, this isn't a recent thing. It's at least a decade of trying to bring it to the forefront and make it be a bigger conversation, a bigger piece of, of making sure that we have that conversation. So so I think, I know we're also looking at, we have an executive session, I believe, that, that we need to get to. Can we, since we have someone waiting, should we do the executive session and then come back to this? Or does it?
We don't have any, go ahead.
What do we need to come back to this one for?
So the first two paragraphs, do we feel like we can roll that forward to the business meeting?
As long as you add in there that teachers will have the option to fly these flags and that they will be provided the adequate resources to have those conversations, we're good.
I think all of our teachers should have that training anyway, so.
Oh, yeah. They should all have a training.
Yeah.
But I'm not saying they should, everyone should fly, should have the symbols in their classroom if they don't feel prepared for it.
Alrighty.
Once they feel.
I mostly value it outside of the building anyway. So, but no, that's fine. I'm just saying that like, I, I feel like prepping our teachers to have these conversations, it's very important. I think it'll be very great for our culture, for our school, that, you know, Black lives are valued, Brown lives, transgender lives. And I feel like anybody that's opposed to it, they are just honestly tattling on themselves that they don't value every single life of every single student in the building.
And then you want to hear the last part, or you want to wait to it after?
Let's, let's go to the next paragraph.
So the last paragraph, we are required by statute to do, to offer an opportunity for students to do the pledge of allegiance. And that opportunity can be in, as it says, in assemblies before, after school. I know at the high school, they, they broadcasted over the morning announcements. Once a week has to be, it's sporting events, wherever. And we had the conversation about the land acknowledgements, which could very easily be part of the ethnic studies. And then an opportunity to recite at least once a week, the lift every voice and sing. And and I worry sometimes when we put in too many, and you get to do this, you get to do this, you get to do this, two things happen. I don't want it to be rote, which is what I feel the pledge of allegiance is for a lot of people. And every time they put something in, it's that much time then that's taken away from instruction time. And can you use these in a way that's instruction without making it, okay, everybody, put your pencil down, and we're going to do the land acknowledgement. Okay, now open up your book, and we're going to do something else. I don't want it to be that. And same with the lift every voice. I would rather have more information and not have it be just during Black History Month, but have it be part of the conversation of Black history, all history. And so I'm not really sure on the lift every voice and sing component. I'd like more information about that.
I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed, Chris, that you haven't taken the opportunity to look up the history and the importance on this national anthem. And it says, "Students shall learn the United States National Anthem and the Black National Anthem, lift every voice and sing." And so it doesn't say that we're singing this weekly. We don't sing the national anthem weekly. But the importance of diversifying the American history outside of white colonialist history is very important. It does say that, that weekly, there will be an opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance and within that time to say an indigenous land acknowledgement. So those two things are different. The Black National Anthem is a beautiful song. If you guys want, I will find it right now on YouTube and play it for you. And this is all in an effort, is what we said with our ethnic studies, is we don't want to silo this. We want to make this part of, integrated into our curriculum. And when we integrate this into our curriculum, we really want to connect these learnings, connect these teachings into, this is American history. The Black National Anthem is American history. Our land acknowledgements are American history, right? And really associating these values back into what it is to be American. And I think that these things are really important and that we should really not, that we shouldn't stray away from learning these things.
So I had, I had read it wrong, Robin, that I was looking at the once a week for all of the components. I had not read it that it was, they'll learn the national anthem and the Black National Anthem. And I did do a little bit of research today. I didn't realize that it was written in 1901, and it was put to music in 1905. And it is a very beautiful piece. And so if it's not something that's a required once a week, then learning about it, I think, is very appropriate, especially if you learn about it in tandem with what the national anthem says and the comparison between the two. So with that, let's move forward.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I'm so excited that we're finally going to bring land acknowledgements to our district.
Amanda, several classrooms do it already. My niece does it. So we're, we're going to do, we're going to move on to the, to the bond contract approvals. That's Jordan. Where is it? Yeah, I think it's Jordan.
That is me. Thank you, Vice Chair Gomez. Sorry. Work on the 2021 projects for our bond are now getting underway. The first new contracts staff intend to award are for the built-up roofing project at West Orient Middle School and the covered sports court project at Springwater Trail High School. For both projects, Cornerstone Management Group invited contractors on our pre-qualified list to bid on the defined scopes of work. Both projects received four responsible bids. The West Orient Roofing Project, the low bidder was Arrow Roofing at $347,860 for the base bid and $422,703 if the district elects to upgrade the insulation. Staff request board approval to enter into a contract with Arrow Roofing in the amount of $422,703 for this project. The increased contract value will allow for a more energy-efficient final project and will ensure that there will not be later issues with code compliance. For Springwater Trails Covered Sports Court Project, the low bidder was Pirlo Construction at $268,500. Staff request board approval to enter into a contract with Pirlo Construction in the amount of $268,500. In keeping with fast practice, the bid result summaries for both projects are attached to this agenda item. The opportunity to inspect all bid documents is available to any community member upon request.
So are these both part of the work that was originally intended to be done in the bond?
Yes.
Two recommended action items. Chris?
So I moved to approve a word of a contract in the amount of $422,703 to Arrow Roofing to the built, for the built-up roofing project at West Orient Middle School.
Does anyone second?
I second.
Okay, moved by Chris, second by Robin, to move to approve a word of a contract in the amount of $422,703 to Arrow Roofing for the buildup roofing project at West Orient Middle School. Any discussions?
Is this work expected to start fairly soon then?
Yes. Both of these jobs will be done over the summer. So we will finish out the school year without doing construction. And then when we move into the summer programming that staff is currently planning, these two facilities will not be utilized for summer programming.
Okay. Thank you. Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes. Okay. So it passes, and then we have a second, second recommended action.
All right. So I'd move to approve a word of a contract in the amount of $268,500 to Pirlo Construction for the assembly of the sports court cover at Springwater Trail High School.
Anyone second? Okay. Moved by Chris, second by Amanda, move to approve the award of a contract in the amount of $268,500 to Pirlo Construction for the assembly of the sports court cover at Springwater Trail High School. Any discussion?
So is this also a summer project as well?
Yes, it is.
Everyone in favor?
Point of clarification, sorry, Vice Chair Gomez. We will likely start, there are two components to this project. It's not included in this contract. So for this contract, it is exclusively summer work. Because of the, the cover that we're installing, it encroaches upon the current access to the buildings behind Springwater Trail. And so we will be pouring a new road and path that goes to the, to the facilities behind Springwater Trail. That work may begin this spring to prepare a sequenced approach to the construction. It's not a part of this contract, but just to head that up.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? Everyone in favor? Amanda?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Okay. So the motion passes. So now, we're going to move into executive session. Executive sessions are closed to the public. Representatives of the news media shall not be allowed to attend. As provided by statute, only designated staff shall be allowed to attend during the discussion about negotiations. All other members of the audience are asked to log off. No decisions may be made in executive session. The ORS 192.6602D. Okay. Following the executive session, the board will now reconvene into the regular work session. So this time has been set aside for the board to discuss upcoming agenda items, board operations, and meeting needs. Anything coming up?
Do we have things that are getting scheduled? Because I know we're kind of running out of, what have we got? About four meetings left this year?
We have.
Okay. Okay. Something else that the question came up, that maybe this will be part of it too. The, we were asking question about graduation ceremonies. So getting that on the board's radar, what we're going to do with graduation and participation in that. I know they're working on it, but it was rambly. What are we doing for graduation? And I want to make sure I'm part of it this year.
We had our first meeting Wednesday this week to get into the detailed planning. Each school has some ideas. We are not, we're not betting on the coliseum, given the sector guidance we're experiencing. We know it's going to be at home like the rest of the conference this year. Barlow is entertaining three different ideas, and they're in the process of gathering student input. And they're going to have parent meetings first week of May as well. All three high schools will be doing that. They're toying with a drive-through, they're toying with a movie theater-like thing at Barlow, because they have the big wall up on the gym that they could do that with, but they're worried about parking. And then the third idea is escaping me right now. I apologize. Gresham High School is looking more toward a drive-through option. And to my disbelief, but in a positive way, students and staff and some parents at this point really kind of want to return to Kmart. And caught me by surprise, I still think we will have a drive-through onsite at Gresham High School. And then Springwater Trails looking at using one of the football fields with an open area to be able to do that, or an auditorium. So we just started the detailed planning of that work. They are going to reach out to students and parents expeditiously to get more input. We're going to be careful about giving people the, the impression that they have a choice. And the reason for that is, is we're looking at the metrics. The metrics could force us to change some of our options. So we're, we're being careful about saying, we're gathering your input and your preferences, knowing that we may not be able to honor that, but we are working toward it.
Do we by any chance have dates?
We have dates. It's that second week of June or third week of June, the Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I will look that up right now.
What is it? 15, 16, 17?
Yeah, 15th, 16th, and 17th. And Jade hasn't gotten to the point of updating this yet. Springwater Trails on the 16th, I believe. Barlow, I believe Barlow is on the 15th. And Gresham High School is going to be on the 17th. Currently, although this could change as well, the two bigs, Barlow and Gresham, will start at five. And Springwater Trails principal is preferring seven when they get organized. So right now, that's on the counter. That could change as well.
So we have on May 6th, a budget committee meeting at 6:00 PM. And that will be a virtual meeting. The Zoom link will be provided. And we also have a regular board meeting at seven, and that will be here in the council chambers in person. Any other announcements? So our meeting is adjourned at 9:47.